Thank you for the rain that you have sent our way. Father, we ask in the name of Jesus that you just continue to encourage our leaders here and give them the nights they need to keep us going in the right direction. Father, we ask for blessings upon all our officials throughout the United States. We ask that you protect our soldiers that are spread all across the world and may you return them home with honor. Father, we ask for special blessings this council here today, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the most convenient of the three nations.
I'm allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go on into place to Texas.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Is there any special presentations this morning? None? Consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Here at none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Does any citizen wish to make any comments about any item on the agenda? If so, raise your hand. The sheriff has a sheet for you to fill out. No one? Okay. Next item is treasurer.
No.
No, no, that's not right. It's road ops, isn't it?
Morning Judge.
Morning.
Judge, the reason why we have this first item on the agenda for y'all's consideration, in the past, we've only taken maybe one or two loads to these cities and school and things like this. They're requesting 350 tons. Evidently, they're doing some kind of rehabilitation of one of their roads in city limits of Toler. And just wanted to bring it before y'all's attention, before we do this, this is kind of getting in the area that we would call an interlocal project. The money, the cost of it is getting up to that point that it really needs to work before we do.
Now, I got one question. We getting reimbursed for equipment and that?
Yes. Ever since 2007, January, when the commissioner's court put that policy in, which were just following the transportation code, that was already there, but yes, they're getting charged for the trucks, the fuel, and the employees. And it's delivery only. We're not doing any other part.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this request from the city of Toler for delivery and I guess installation of 350 tons of road base.
No, just delivery.
Just delivery? Okay.
Cell phone.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the road operations chip ceiling, a portion of the roads located within the city limits of Granbury, Green Meadows Road, and Whisper View Circle.
Judge, this also falls a city. This is the city of Granbury. As part of our list of this year, Bill Coke, we've got two, Green Meadows Road and Whisper View Circle, which according to the city's map, they have posted on their website of January of this year, it shows these two areas that you see in blue on your monitor that is within the city limits of Granbury. I've talked to Alva Cox with the city. He does want to participate, and I've given him the quotes of whatever cost for us to go in and hit those as we go through. It comes to $2,657.48. In the past, probably from this point on, when we run into this, we haven't done this before, but as you've seen, Green Meadows, we've never run into this situation before. We skipped a spot. So, we've got two spots in that one area, and that's going to be pretty evident, you know. Not very good work to try to do it that way. So, that's for your approval to go ahead and have the city pay for this to be done while we're doing it.
What precinct is that in?
Precinct three.
Three?
When you came to talk to me about it, your concern was if the city was not going to repave those, and it wasn't their time to repave those sections of the street, the people that live in that area wouldn't understand why it was partially paved and it was skipped to the next location.
Exactly.
So, you called Alva and told him that we would just do all of it if they reimburse us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that way, I mean, the people that live out there won't understand, won't even notice the difference. Is that correct?
Commissioner, in the past, I've contacted the city. I have never brought it to a court, but I've contacted the city when we're doing, we've got a bunch of them. MM Ranch Road is a prime example. When we did, they weren't willing to participate at that time. We were doing hot mix at that time.
But they are on this. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the chip ceiling, a portion of the following roads, Green Meadows Road and Whisper View Circle.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Budget and finance.
Judge, commissioners, members of the court, I believe you all have a copy of the budget. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions about the budget amendments? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Payment of bills?
We also have received advanced copies of invoices that have been approved on payment. We ask that you pay these invoices. And I do have a long list, but I don't think that you need me to go over.
No, we, most of them, we've read over anyway, so.
Any questions?
Any questions for Becky on the ratifying the payment of the bills from April 21st, 2015, through May 4th, 2015?
Just a note for, not to have to do anything with Becky, but for the court, but on page three, you'll see $564,489 to the WB Kibler. That's for some of the groundwork and excavation. At 1:00 till 2:30 today, there's, we start our weekly construction meetings, and I'll be at that meeting, and anytime any one of you want to go with me, you're welcome to. But at 1:00 at the trailer today, they'll start their construction meetings. But Todd sent me those as well, and they were broke out. Stan had sent an email to me and Todd asking, because as you remember, YMCA paid the bond for us when we had the issue with the city. That $89 is also in reimbursements this time to be reimbursed back to the Y. I saw that check, I believe, for us to pay back the Y for them paying for our bond. I believe I saw that Y check, so that was in the email back and forth between me and Stan, and I believe Kathy was copied on that.
Said he had done that.
Just information only is all that is. Without, I make a motion, we ratify paying the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry to ratify paying the bills. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Becky. Consider and take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the resolution for the VCLG grant application through the sheriff's office.
Judge, commissioners, this VCLG grant, Victims Coordinator and Liaison Grant, we've had in place for a number of years, since before I was sheriff even. And so, this is just a resolution that we have to pass yearly to send to the state, to the attorney general's office, so we can get this position, which this position isn't fully funded, but it's.
No cash on it.
I don't have those dollars. But, so it's a very good thing, and for our crime victim coordinator to help, and we've had her there for a long time, and she interfaces with anybody that has been a victim of domestic violence. She helps get them through the process and get them any kind of help they might need. So, it's a valid needed thing to my office. So, just ask that you approve this and sign it, so we can see if we can get some more money for this year.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the county judge to sign a resolution for the VCLG grant. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry is a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sheriff. Consider and take appropriate action to allow the anti-idling signs to be placed in the county parking lots. Michelle, you want to come up and address us on that?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I am Michelle McKenzie. I'm with the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. We are funded through the TCEQ Roderick Air Quality Planning Grant, and through that grant, we're providing anti-idling signs. We've actually already installed seven around the city of Granbury, and there's going to be one at Toler and one at Crescent. The signs actually ask drivers to turn off their engines after five minutes of idling to reduce ozone. This is actually in support of the 2012 anti-idling resolution that was passed by the court. EPA is looking at lowering the ozone standard, so whatever efforts we can do to try to lower our emissions for the county is definitely going to be beneficial for showing good faith efforts for what we're trying to do. So, we'd like to provide six signs to be installed at the service center, as well as county annex, as well as the courthouse.
Where are they going to be, exactly where are they going to be placed?
That'll be up to the court to let me know. Just, I mean, it's.
Okay. All right.
We'd just like to put them in the parking lot, so that people will.
Sure. Is there any fine associated with non-compliance?
No, it's purely a voluntary resolution, asking people to help out.
As you know, we can't pass ordinances like that.
City does have an ordinance.
City does.
For large trucks and.
Yeah.
It'll be provided by the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, cost to the county.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Who will be responsible?
I would ask the county to install. We don't, I mean, I can check into having it installed.
Maintenance, yeah. Building maintenance. All right. I'll entertain a motion to allow the anti-idling signs to be placed on county parking lots.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that, I'll bet keep enough words. I agree with you, put four words down there.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Judge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider the resolution requesting signs from the Texas Department of Transportation regarding noise abatement, engine brake noise along FM 4 North in Thorpe Springs, and take appropriate action. Is this Commissioner Precinct four?
I'll be glad to handle it for, me and Don will take it on. A few years ago, the Acton was having trouble with Jake brakes coming into the city of Acton, and Commissioner Precinct three at that time talked to TechDOT, and they asked us for a resolution so that they could put up signs asking, same kind of deal that Michelle's talking about really, that they requested they not use Jake brakes. It's a resolution. But that way, if it's signed, if there's signage up, DPS will at least go out and the sheriff's office has something to write a warning on or try to control the Jake brakes. There's a resident or two in Thorpe Springs that when they come in from Highway four, this has gone on for the last month or so, and they've called road ops, they've called my office. So, Don come up with a resolution after talking to TechDOT's area office and the local office in Glen Rose. So, the resolution says, whereas the residents of Thorpe Springs community have identified a traffic problem on Lipan Highway, Farm Market 4, from Tintop Highway, 2580 to Oak Trail Drive, whereas the problem concerns engine brake noise, whereas the citizens of Thorpe Springs community have requested assistance from the commissioners' court of Hood County, and whereas TechDOT can place signs along these roadways to notify truck drivers that such actions causing brake noise is prohibited, it is therefore resolved that the commissioners' court of Hood County requests that TechDOT place signage along FM 4 North between Tintop Highway, Farm Market 2580, and Oak Trail Drive prohibiting this engine brake noise to be a problem. It is therefore a witness this resolution was passed and approved by Hood County Commissioners evidenced by the signatures below, signed by all five members of the court, 12th day of May, 2015.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider property tax assessment and collections contract with the Hood County Appraisal District and take appropriate action.
Commissioners. I am just here this morning to ask that the court approve the judge signing off on the contract for the appraisal district as I presented it. The change to that contract would be that they remit more frequently instead of twice a month. I've asked that in the contract that it be a weekly remittance. The paperwork that I just gave you, I acquired from the treasurer's office, and those are distribution summaries. And if you'll look down at the bottom on each one of those, it says Hood County total in a little box there. That is the total of the payment made to the county. The dates at the top would be the collection dates, the dates that those funds were collected. Even during this high peak, heavy collection season, most of those were collected for a 15-day period before they were remitted.
Now, that, I've got information from Greg, and it showed he did six in January and six in December during the high period.
These logs show collections beginning December 1st to December 15th, paid on the 16th. And then, I don't have any, I don't have another December.
He did it on the 16th, for the 16th through the 18th. He did it on the 20th, for the 20th. He did it on the 19th. He did it on the 21st through 29th, and he did another one on the 30th through 31st.
Okay. I don't, again, I don't have all of those. Mine goes from what I have stopped at December 15th. And then, the next one I have is for the 7th of January through the 16th to the 21st. And then, I don't have anything from the 22nd through February the 3rd. But my point with all of these is that some of these are hundreds of thousands, and some of them even over 2 million and over a million, and they were held for 15 days. As the tax assessor collector, I have a responsibility and liability for those funds, and I am not comfortable with signing off on a contract that allows them to pay twice a month. That's, I mean, that's the bulk of, that's right down to what I have to say today. I'm not comfortable with that because I'm responsible for funds.
What about what Jeff said, because he's got different numbers?
Yeah.
Well, again, I just got a few copies from the treasurer's office. I don't have everything from October 1st through the end of January. The ones that I provided are the only ones that I have.
Here's my issue. I mean, no one, I mean, they collect taxes for every entity in the county. No one else, this is not an issue for anyone else. It's only for you.
But as the tax assessor collector, I have a constitutional duty to collect those taxes. It being contracted to me does not relieve me of liability.
Well, it does say in the contract it can be twice a month.
Yeah.
It does.
It does say that.
But in the current contract.
Right.
It says that in the state statute.
Well, the tax code says that those payments need to be, that should be made daily.
No, that's.
No, it's not true. That's not true.
That's not true. Those are for deposits, and this is for disbursements. You're looking at two different things.
This is for the county.
That's, but at least monthly is what the statute.
Have we not got any money from the tax assessor since you've been in office? Have we ever not been paid?
Not that I'm aware of.
Then, I mean, this comes up every time we renew this contract. And have you gone up and sat down with the tax assessor, Greg Stewart, and sat down in his office and talked about this?
I have only went in and talked.
Have you gone and sat down with Greg Stewart and talked about it? When was the last time?
Probably 2009, 2010.
Six years ago.
His comment was, if you tried to take the tax collections, I would fight you on this.
His comment was what? I'm sorry?
That if I tried to take the county tax collections, he would fight me on it.
So, is your goal to get the tax collection? Is that your goal?
No, sir.
What's your goal?
My goal is to get them to remit those funds more timely.
I mean, during peak times, we get it more frequently than weekly.
We have.
Six times in December, six times in January.
October, November, and February, we got two payments a month.
The reason I ask if you went to talk to him, when I went and sat down with him last month, if you use Bank of America or you use Omni, and we have 52,000 residents and there's about 44,000 accounts, when those money come in, it doesn't come in as Teresa McCoy or Steve Berry or Jeff Tout. It comes in from whatever bank you're using, and then it has to be divvied out by the staff to put in each line item. I, for one, have about six different tax accounts, so they have to make sure it goes on the right account. He just does, it's not like the check comes in from Omni America and it's for Butch Barton, and he just takes that check and puts it in Hood County files. It has to be divvied out, and then it has to be divvied out to road operations, library, and Hood County.
I understand that, Commissioner, but that's not all done manually. They have tax assessment and collection software that divvies that up for them, I'm certain.
I understand that, and that's why I don't want to rock the boat, because we don't have that at the county level, and it would cost us a fortune to take it over.
I don't, I don't think it would.
You can do it on your budget right now, is that what you're saying?
Well, of course not. I'd have to have tax collection software.
Okay. What's that going to cost?
I've checked with two or three different companies. It's a pretty good range.
Okay. So, how much should we add to the tax roll to cover this so that you'll feel comfortable?
Commissioner, this is just a matter of them paying more timely.
If you'd have gone up there in the last six years and sat down and talked to the man, we might have about had this conversation.
Commissioner, Greg Stewart doesn't like to talk to me, and I don't.
I'll be glad to be the mediator.
I don't like to go and have someone look down their nose at me like they think that I'm the enemy.
Well, but.
You want him to change his entire process to conform to you?
No. I just believe that it's the county's money, and it should be remitted more timely. I don't see the point in them sitting there on the money for 15 days before they pay it.
Are you ready to take it over if he says no?
Well, I'll have to get ready, won't I?
You got any money?
I believe by law, the court has to fund my office to do the job, so we'd have to find the money.
Do you think we need to schedule a meeting, maybe a couple of commissioners and Teresa to sit down with Greg?
I'd be glad to do that, but, you know, when I'm reading the termination of the contract, if anyone wants to terminate, they have 180 days. We're already inside that window. This is really a mute point, because we're 180 days from the end of the contract, and if we were going to cancel or change anything, it had to be done prior to the 180 days.
But that contract was not renewed by the date set in the contract.
But we're inside that 180-day window now.
Okay.
Well, what's y'all's pleasure?
I mean, my thoughts on this is that they just agreed to remit more timely, and we're done here.
Well, but he's already said that he'll do that. I think that Jeff said he did it six times. I don't know what he did. I don't check the deposits every day. I don't know if he did or didn't. But I know that when I went up and sat down, he showed me the statute where he only has to do it twice a month. He makes the deposits daily. He doesn't put them in an interest-bearing account, because that's not, he doesn't hold them that long, because he divvies them out to nine taxing entities. And that's what he told me, when I sat down with him and talked to him, it goes to AMA, it goes to city of Granbury. And I think Commissioner Tout made a great point. I don't hear anybody else complaining about the way he's paying the bills.
These other folks don't have liability, Commissioner. I have personal liability.
The court pays your bond. You're bonded and you're paid for by the court. You're covered. And that's why I ask you, have you, since you've been in office, do you know that you've not had any money turned in? And your answer was no.
I don't know that, because I don't get anything.
You don't know that?
I don't know that for certain, no. I don't get any reports from the appraisal district. I don't get anything. That's why I had to ask the treasurer to even get this. I don't, I don't get anything saying when they collect it and when they pay it, or get any reports from him at all. I have that liability, but I have absolutely no oversight or get no information from anybody at all on this. I'm not good with that.
So, you're good with standing up here and saying we need to add three cents to our tax roll, so you can fund your account, so you'll be good with it?
All I'm asking for.
Is that what you want?
Again, all I'm asking for is that they just agree to remit a little more timely. If they remit every week or the week prior, for funds they collect on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they still have over a week to remit those funds by the following Friday. And these are electronic payments. It's not like it's real-time consuming to just remit that money. I mean, you can see on these reports that they collect the money through the 15th and then pay it on the 16th. Obviously, it's not real-time consuming to get all of that together and make the deposit to the county.
Well, let's, I think this is, it's going back and forth. I'll entertain a motion to table this, so we can get everybody together, and maybe Steve and Jeff and Teresa can sit down with Greg and do that. I'll entertain a motion to table this, so we can get that some.
I don't see any reason to table it.
Well, you, but.
I'll make a motion if we pass the previous contract the way it was worded, because we're already within our 180 days.
So, not this one?
Not this one. The previous contract, it's already on file.
It meets statutory requirements.
Or you take the one we're looking in front of us and track it out more frequently than weekly. We can't, I mean, I just don't understand why we're, I have the same fear. What if he walks down, because I just got the phone with him this morning. He's agitated and want to come down. What if he dumps this on us August 31st? What if he dumps this in our lap and said, it's our baby now, you have it? Then what are we going to do, Teresa?
Then we'll have to before September 1st get ready to take the court.
We're already way through budget by then. We've already passed our effective tax rate at that point. We've already passed our budget basically by that point. We don't have the money to start from scratch at that point. I mean, my aggravation is that we've not gone and had a sit-down meeting with him as soon as we get into these contracts. We wait till the 11th hour and do this every year. We've done this in my ninth year, ever since you've been in office, we've done this with Greg Stewart. Yes, ma'am, we have.
Two years ago is when we rewrote the contract. And even though he didn't go ahead and remit more timely during the peak season, I still just agreed to renew it.
Nine years, we've been paying on it. The auditor's not here. He's out of town at a conference, but we've not, not had money paid by the, matter of fact, he's been very good about keeping the court appraisal where we're at on money coming in each year and where the appraisals are. It'll be a big deal to separate. There's an item in there that I don't like, okay? I don't like that we pay at the county level the same amount that GISD does, and they have a lot more taxing. But the way that's written at the appraisal district, it takes at least the five of those members to vote to change it. We're paying exactly the same as GISD. I don't like that, and he knows that. I've gone up and sat down with him numerous times and talked to him about face-to-face and left there mad about it, because we are, we're, we're being penalized. But Judge Meyer and James Wan did a handshake agreement years ago and that's where this contract was written. But you've not even gone up to sit down with him in six years. You said that yourself at the podium.
I have a guy up at the appraisal district that won't even speak to me when he sees me.
That's not the point!
His office.
It's your job. That is your job!
Collect those taxes.
No, you have, we have delegated that to the appraisal district.
Have any liability. Now, if you can find some statute that would relieve me of liability, I'm happy just to say, okay, I'll sign that today.
Well, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve the previous contract.
No, to, to strike the words frequently more often than once a week.
Okay, with those changes?
Well, this year, we'll go back and sit down and meet, but we're within the 180 day window. I don't feel comfortable going forward without him dumping it in our lap. He needs a contract in front of him.
Okay.
I mean, if she wants to sit down with him, I'll be glad to go sit down with her and him and any other person that wants to go. But I don't want it dumped, we're, in less than a month, we start budget talks. Okay?
I, I know. What's your motion, Commissioner?
My motion is to approve the property tax assessment collection contract. And on page three, strike frequently than, than more once per week. It says frequently, her comment was to make deposits frequently than once per week for the payments collected the prior week. Strike that.
Return it back to twice a month?
Twice a month. Or as needed by the, has been done in the past.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Submitted by Commissioner.
Taut, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Teresa. Consider and take appropriate action to approve additions to the purchasing policy and procedure manual, chapter six, letter one, or I, I guess, procurement, procurement credit cards. Yes ma'am?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I had a, a request from a department to issue a basically neutral card for the entire department to be able to check out. Because of this, it helps them in their business, because from what I understand, they were having to, you know, only certain people in the Sheriff's Department have credit cards for JP Morgan. And somebody else would need a card and didn't have access to a card, so they were like switching out cards, which, that can be very convoluted and not very good on fraud. So, I had the request to try and work it out with JP Morgan to get a departmental card. I was able to do that, but with that, there has to be a little bit of change in the manual for the responsibilities and how they'll go down. So, I want to add this to the existing purchasing credit card policy. It states, "In the case of a departmental credit card, which is one that is not issued in an individual name, but one that is issued in the department name, being used, it will require the department with the temporary cards to have the employee using it on a temporary basis, sign a form that outlines the responsibilities for that card for temporary use." This in case they misuse it, they do things they're not supposed to, we have some recourse. Because when they sign it, I will get a copy of it. The sheriff's office should keep a copy of it. Says, "A copy will be sent to purchasing for each employee utilizing one of these cards. A, a copy should be retained by the department. Itemized receipts are required in order to pay the credit card statements. It will be each department's responsibility to monitor these temporary cards and substantiate all purchases with itemized receipts using this temporary card prior to the statement being reviewed and paid by the auditor's department." This way, we are trying to just control things, make sure we have measures in place in which they can use these cards. So I ask that you approve this for the purchasing policy manual. And I will send copies of this to every department and have them inserted in their book. Yes, it is. We're, we're really, I mean, we had to do something if we're going to issue something in a department's name.
Are you confident that you have checks and balances for abuse? Are you confident that if and when this card was abused, picked up quickly, the system, you have designed it?
I do believe it is. It is up to each department, though, to check for itemized statements. Now, the auditor is excellent at picking up on it. I don't actually see things after the fact. I see them before the fact. But the auditor does, he's very diligent about checking these. Always, we've only had one instance where there's issues that I'm aware of, and it was dealt with very quickly as far as when we found that out.
Office Director.
Pardon me?
Office Director.
Um, I didn't even know about it, because it's just another step to try and help him.
This would be across all directorships?
And these are only for the temporary cards. Right now, I have only one department that does that. And that's just probably because of the scope of the amount of employees they have.
Would Don be responsible for the use of this card?
If they had department's cards issued.
What, what's happening is, the cards that have been issued to Sheriff Deeds, for example, have Roger Deeds on them. They also have Steve Smith on them, they have Rhonda Ship. But when a deputy goes to, to transfer somebody overnight, they have to take, they have to have a written statement that says, "I have Roger Deeds' credit card," or "I have Rhonda Ship's credit card." So it's just a geriatric, a generic, not generic, generic credit card that says Hood County Sheriff's Department, and somebody can be handed that card out. Okay, but it, they're basically, their concern is when they get to hotels, they're having a credit card that has Butch Barton's name on it, but it's not really Butch Barton when they ID them. So that's why she's doing this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to change the purchasing policy procedure manual, chapter six, letter one, for the procurement of credit cards.
Don't move.
Commissioner Berry makes the motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Dever, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And, and no more geriatric jokes up here, I tell you. Commissioner? Noe, you're on.
Good morning, Commissioner. Judge, I have a brief fact sheet that coincides and will help provide a global aspect by as an organization to our county and to our, if you may.
Sorry to make you wait.
Again, this is a brief overview of what the hospital provides to the community. We are a nationally accredited organization. While as we hold accreditation, just to clarify, our admissions exceed over 2,600 a year. Emergency room visits over 20,000 a year. We bring in about over 500 new babies a year into the county. Surgery is exceeding 5,000. Half, half lab procedures. Radiology procedures, the next 1,000. Procedures per year, therapy visits, and that's 1,000. For Hood County, but also some of it in Raff County. So those citizens often seek services within our organization. Our continued investment in the community has been shown over the years as we continue to expand the hospital, to increase access to care in patients within the city of Granbury as well as Hood County, as which I think can be seen as a commitment on our campus. Overall, we take about 300,000, just under 300,000 square feet in the county, in terms of square footage, in terms of where we provide medical services. That doesn't include our physician. So, with that, it's kind of just a brief overview of what we provide, which coincides with our request for your continued remit to 1115 waiver program. Noe can explain, if you have any questions.
I believe at the last hospital board meeting we had, we talked about, it's still the county owns the facility, but with all leasing it, some of the things that you brought up today, I think it's important that we get out to the public to understand. And, and as you do things as a big company, some of your home office things get moved to Nashville, such as billing. So if we have issues, we have issues such as billing. What, what should they do and who should they approach and where should they go for that issue?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're here to serve our community. Our leadership for this association resides in our county. And, so we have that commitment. If you have any questions or you, you have a call about a concern about billing, bring it to us locally and we can talk. Because we, we are a part of a larger organization and with those, with that comes a lot of benefits, like capital resources, best and build infrastructure for access to care. It also comes with a lot of, sometimes consolidation of services, which you speak of, Commissioner. Yes, we did consolidate our billing to Central Office in Nashville, but that doesn't mean that we can't help our citizens here through that billing process if they have any questions or concerns. We always tell patients that we're, we're happy to work with them, they have to ask us, they have to call us, they have to contact us. But by, if they ignore the bill, then that collection process certainly goes full. As with any organization.
So 21,000 ER visits in the last year, is that what, is what you put on this? The 500 new babies and the, you talked about a new surgery wing possibly, so you're doing 5,000 surgeries up at...
Yes, sir. 5,000, just over 5,000 surgeries a year. And just this last quarter, we're exceeding all these metrics, our admission percent. Our surgeries are up about 2 percent. Our ER volume is up 30 percent prior year, just for first quarter. We're anticipating about just under 600. And so we're continuing to grow, and as we continue to grow, our commitment is to best answer that, that demand. And yes, we have, do have enough coming project that we're currently evaluating and actually have schematic drawing of the hospital, of our extension.
Okay. Okay, this, really, we're talking of, that's, good, good information, but we're talking about the IGT. What's, what's the...
Yeah, and, like you mentioned, I'm requesting the continued IGT funding. This is part of the 1115 Medicare program as we talk about that. And through these funding and through matching funds that the hospital will, for Medicare, help expand Medicare, help improve, or expand healthcare and improve healthcare. Some of these items that, that are on the...
What, what, what would be the IGT funding that you want approved, this?
By my calculations, I have 32,103.
Okay. I, I really appreciate the way the hospital has worked with the county on indigent healthcare. You know, it's really saving the county a lot of money, I, I think, for that, during that process. And I, I'll accept a motion to approve the IGT funding of $32,103.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Submitted by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you all very much. Anything else you want to say? Yeah, thank you, thank you for sitting with us. All right, consider and take appropriate action regarding the request from the county clerk regarding the preservation of historic record books and digital conversion of microfiche.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Yes, I have a plan to archive some books and historical records, some microfiche film, and I believe I've emailed you or given you the books to look at. I'm just asking you to approve this.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about this for the county clerk?
We talked about this earlier, you've got money in your...
Yes, I have it in, in my archive account, yes. So I'm just continuing with the archival process of restoring my books. And I have some microfiche film that I've also liked to get restored.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
Second.
Submitted by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We're now convening into executive session. We have three different executive sessions. The first one will be to convene into executive session per government code 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the right-of-way issue on the road leading to the orchards on the Brazos. Okay, we reconvened into open session, it is now 10:37. The next item on the agenda is take appropriate action regarding item 8C8A, road leading to the orchards. Would anybody like to make any comments?
County Road 307.
On County Road 307? Anyone? Well, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to take appropriate action.
I move that Commissioners Court classify County Road 307 as a third-class road under Transportation Code 251.007.
Okay, I have a motion to classify County Road 307 as a third-class road leading into the orchards on the Brazos with a 30-foot right-of-way.
That was what was on the...
The public, the, yeah. Okay, does anybody have any more comments about this? Commissioner Barton made the motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
I added it.
That further defines what a classifying a...
You want to restate your, restate your motion?
Motion to classify County Road 307 as a third-class road under Transportation Code 251.007 to include 30-foot width.
Okay. Is any further discussion on this? No, I need a second.
Before I have a second, according to what we approved plat for the orchards when we approved that, according to Don Lenny, when I asked that question earlier, 30-foot was the right-of-way of County Road 307 was on the survey, is that correct, Mr. Lenny? Okay.
Okay, are you making that second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add also, Judge, that pictures I have seen in this, about this road, make the issue on this road, what we've got now, I can put that in there.
Okay, very good. Then if there's no further comments, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Now, we're going to reconvene into...
Before we do that, Judge?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the county attorney and or Don Lenny if they've seen pictures and there is a, if there is a public safety issue that appears to be in those pictures or if anyone has witnessed it.
Commissioners, I, the sheriff and I went down to this road last Friday, and the pictures show that there are obstructions in that 30-foot right-of-way. And I'd like to tender to the court Exhibit A. Photograph of the obstructions that are in the right-of-way. Accepted it as a third-class road.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would recommend to the court that you approve an order of removal, removal of that obstruct, those obstructions in the right-of-way.
Both of the safety issues.
Because of the safety issue, yes.
But based off the fact that we've approved a 30-foot right-of-way, will you or Mr. Lenny be prepared to write a letter then to the person that's obstructing the right-of-way and send them a letter on behalf of the court notifying them that they need to, they have 10 days or so to remove, remove the items or whatever days are by law?
If you want 10 days, I'm just asking for the approval of the court to order the, the removal of those obstructions.
Within a period of a certain time, though?
Whatever time that you want to set forth, 10 days, 15 days?
Keep it as soon as possible because we know the safety issue.
Is your precedence 10, 10 days, a precedent anywhere?
Well, I'd like it to be before the next Commissioners Court, so that if nothing's been done before the next Commissioners Court, we can have an agenda item that we can take action to either get an injunction or a road op removed.
From the...
Of the day.
The date of the letter?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'll entertain a motion for the county attorney along with the road ops to write an order to remove the instruct, obstructions on County Road 307 portion within Hood County. That's the entrance into orchards on the Brazos.
Approximately, how many feet is that, Judge?
500 feet.
500 feet.
Does anybody, do I have that motion?
Don't move.
It's a motion made by Commissioner Barton, do I have a second?
Second.
Submitted by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. The next item is to convene into executive session per government code 551037, deliberations about gifts and donations to discuss the Corvail sculpture as a potential Hood County asset. Commissioner Precinct Two will be taking the lead on that. It's 10:56 and we're convened back in regular session and on the matter of the... 10:57, we're, 10:56, we're back in regular session. Closed session ended on 10:55. We, the item 8B, the donation of gifts will be, no action taken at this time. So the next item on the agenda is to convene into executive session per government code 551087, economic development, to discuss tax abatement for Robin One.
Let me get mine.
Okay, we're reconvened into open session. The executive session closed at 11:12. It is now 11:30. It is now 11:13, and the li-
We need to kind of do what they do.
I think, let's authorize Doug to do that.
Okay.
Okay, the last item would be economic development, and there's really not any action to be done except just authorize Doug to send that letter that's similar to the one he sent out to the city. Does any, any Commissioner have any-
Signed by the court.
Signed by the court, okay? So I'll entertain a motion to do that. Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.